Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting for City Council on Tuesday, October 31, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And during your moment of silence, please keep Councilwoman Warwick's family in your thoughts. She is at a funeral today for her aunt. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
It's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations. And I've been trying to get this person here for a very long time. President Farnham from CMU has repeatedly not allowed me to shine the light on him, but will allow me to shine the light on his students and the university. Please come forward, everyone from CMU. Whereas President Farnham, who became CMU's 10th president in 2018, has spearheaded efforts to enhance the overall CMU experience for students with a focus on student success, holistic health and well-being, and support for a diverse and inclusive climate. And whereas, with his leadership, Carnegie Mellon has applied its transformational educational experiences through the Computer Science Academy, which supports more than 700 K to 12 students in the Pittsburgh region in '22, and the Girls of Steel, which engages K to 12 students from over 30 school districts in the Pittsburgh area. And whereas Carnegie Mellon is forging new futures and even more of a city's diverse legacy sectors by leading technology and workforce advances in manufacturing and through its faculty expertise in energy innovation. And whereas Carnegie Mellon's research and creative inquiry has dramatically transformed the local and regional economy, on an even broader scale, Carnegie Mellon has solidified Pittsburgh's emergence as a global robotics hub, one that has spun out companies and jobs across the region. And whereas collaboration is at the heart of Carnegie Mellon and the university's intentional public-private partnerships are cultivating a diverse workforce regionally, nationally, and globally. This work is advanced by CMU's Robotic Academy, the CMU's Rails Fellows Program, and the university's leadership of the Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant, which will apply Pittsburgh's distinctive strengths and assets in robotics, artificial intelligence, and automation to the region's key sectors and to training a resilient workforce. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize President Farnham and commend Carnegie Mellon University for its sweeping contributions to the city and the region's economy, ecosystem, workforce, and the next generation of leaders. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 31, 2023, to be Carnegie Mellon Forging the Future Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion and a second?
Oh, moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
First of all, on behalf of Carnegie Mellon University, thank you so much.
Thank you for finally coming.
Thank Council President Smith, and also my deep gratitude to your fellow council members for their support, and we're deeply honored. I arrived with great company today, as I mentioned to you. We have many members of the CMU community this morning, but there's one group that I want to identify who are Girls of Steel. The Girls of Steel is an innovative educational program that engages young high school and middle school students in STEM programming, especially in robotics and artificial intelligence. These talented students represent the next generation of scientists and engineers. Students, thank you for being here. Happy to have you here. Council Chair, President Smith, as you know, CMU's history is inextricably linked to our hometown of Pittsburgh. In fact, in recent decades, the city's revival has actually paralleled the rise of Carnegie Mellon as a global institution. And we're so proud of this special symbiotic relationship that we have with the city and the region. Without any doubt, our futures are also very much intertwined. The colleagues that I brought with me today, and you know, I stand here and acknowledge the honor you've bestowed on Carnegie Mellon, but the truth is that work is done by my colleagues at CMU, some of whom, of course, are here, are just a small part of sampling of the countless community members who are committed to securing the bright future for Pittsburgh. It's impossible to talk about the future of CMU without talking about the future and success of Pittsburgh. We share, as you mentioned, in the work of catalyzing economic growth, attracting new talent, and bolstering opportunities and educational experience for all of Pittsburghers. We're all very deeply invested in Pittsburgh. I've now lived here for 10 years, as you know, and my two children, adult children, have moved to Pittsburgh, followed me here. So we're invested in Pittsburgh. And of course, CMU is very, very proud to have Pittsburgh as its hometown, and we're so delighted to have a strong partnership with both the public and the private sector. Again, I want to thank you, Council Chair Smith, and also all of the members of the council that, over the years, I've gotten to know for your support, for your commitment, and also for your service through our community. This is truly an honor for us to be here to join you this morning. And you're right, I'm guilty of delaying this for some time, but I appreciate your persistence. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say, when I became Council President, you get a seat on the board for Carnegie Mellon. And honestly, the first thing I did was called him and asked him if he'd take a ride through my district, so he got to know what District 2 is. And he graciously came for the ride, and he stopped at Mrs. Bailey's house in Sheridan, and he did all the things I asked him to do. And I just got to thank you for being so humble and so kind in your service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because he didn't want to come here. I mean, he didn't want him to be acknowledged. He wanted the school to be...
Let me make that offer open to all the other council members, that I'll come to your district and take a ride in your car if you wish you'd join me.
Hey, you're in their districts. Come to my side. Maybe all the council, would you want to join us for the photo, please? And I just want to say how proud we are to have Carnegie Mellon in the City of Pittsburgh and the work that you do. Thank you.
Likewise. Likewise.
Do you want to have anyone else say a word?
No, I think you have a very busy agenda, and we're happy to be here. Thank you very much.
You want to just announce who is here? Can they at least say their names?
Why don't you introduce yourselves, the girls? Go ahead.
Everyone introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Ashi Bhatt. I'm a 10th grader from Franklin Regional Senior High School, and I am the Outreach Lead of the Girls of Steel. We're so happy to be here. Thank you.
I am Sonia Troyana from Hampton High School, and this is my first year on Girls of Steel, the FRC team.
Hi, I'm Ava Miller from Plum Senior High School. I am the Advocacy Lead, and I just want to say how honored we are to be welcomed here.
Well, thank you very much.
Now, say who you are.
Go for it.
And then come back over this side for the photo.
I'm Rita Canton. I am the Director of Engineering Outreach at CMU.
I'm Sarah Jacobson. I am the Outreach Coordinator for the College of Engineering.
Good morning. I'm Amy Burkert, Vice Provost for Education at Carnegie Mellon.
I'm Mark Stellic, a university professor at CMU in Computer Science, and I'm the co-founder of CMUCS Academy.
Moi Padilla, I'm the Executive Director of the CMU Rails Fellows Program.
My name's George Cantor. I'm a professor in the Robotics Institute at Carnegie Mellon.
How's it going? I'm Matt Johnson-Roberson. I'm Professor and Director of the Robotics Institute at Carnegie Mellon.
Good morning. My name is Patience Whitworth. I'm an Associate Vice Provost for Student Success.
I'm Corey Turner. I'm the Executive Director of the Peer Fellowship funded by the Build Back Better Program.
My name is Elizabeth Kissel. I'm the Lead Mentor of Girls of Steel Robotics.
Hi, I'm Catherine. I work at the Carnegie Mellon Robotics Academy.
Jesse Flot, Co-Director of the Carnegie Mellon Robotics Academy.
Todd Durant, and I am also with the Carnegie Mellon Robotics Academy.
Vu Nguyen, Co-Director of Robotics Academy.
Chelsea Blackburn Cohen, Executive Fellow for Community Engagement.
Tim McNulty, I direct Government Relations for Carnegie Mellon.
Thank you. Everyone, let's come around, and we'll take the photo facing the camera this way. And I have to mention, my brother also worked at Carnegie Mellon. I can't remember what it was. Do you remember what it was? Do you remember this time? Tim just told me.
Do you want them all up here?
Everybody can come up, come up around here. He and I are going to stand, you stand right here with the photo.
I think we need everybody else up here somewhere. Sure, you guys go on the side. Okay, we come over here. One more, one more.
Thank you. I think we should exit that way.
President Farnham's like a rock star. He knows everyone. But now can we have the folks from Hard Rock? Please come forward. Thank you. Just want to say, every year, I try to do something in October to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Month, and in April, I do the Child Abuse. And this year, come on up. And this year, I'm so proud to be able to acknowledge a business in my district, the Hard Rock Cafe. Everybody knows a Hard Rock Cafe. And if you don't, give them a try. They're in Station Square. Whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which aims to raise awareness about the disease that can be treatable when caught early. And whereas there are many ways to bring awareness to this disease, which in 2023 is estimated that there will be nearly 300,000 new invasive cases in women and an estimated 2,800 cases diagnosed in men. And whereas fundraising is one form of awareness, and one that the Hard Rock Cafe Pittsburgh in District 2 has been involved in year after year alongside Hard Rock International, who for over 30 years has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for breast cancer research. And whereas Hard Rock International continues to support breast cancer awareness and research with its 24th Annual Pinktober Campaign, which took place throughout the month of October. Starting October 1st, Hard Rock locations around the world participated in fundraising efforts supporting the Hard Rock Heals Foundation, the charitable arm of Hard Rock, with proceeds benefiting the American Cancer Society and to local charities. And whereas Hard Rock has donated millions of dollars towards breast cancer research over the last 23 years of the Pinktober Campaign, last year Hard Rock raised over $1 million, representing the largest amount the company has fundraised since the inception of the program back in 2000. And whereas most recently, Hard Rock Cafe Pittsburgh in District 2 hosted Country for a Cure in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and they continuously work side by side with Women Who Rock Foundation to create events to drive donations and spread awareness throughout Pittsburgh and the rest of the world. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Hard Rock Cafe Pittsburgh and Hard Rock International for its efforts to help combat breast cancer. And now be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 31, 2023, to be Hard Rock Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Have a motion to approve in a second.
We're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. You can all speak, and just make sure you introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Melinda Calaisi. I'm the founder of Women Who Rock, and I'm so proud to stand here today alongside Hard Rock Cafe and our beneficiary, McGee Women's Research Institute, and honored that we have been able to raise unbelievable awareness and funds for women, not only here in Pittsburgh, but from Pittsburgh around the world, making a global impact. So thank you so much, and thank you, Hard Rock team.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Blank. I am an Operations and Retail Manager at Hard Rock. We just really appreciate everyone nominating us and recognizing all the hard work and also the community support that we've received throughout the years in our efforts to raise a lot of money for Pinktober.
Someone else has to say something. You got to give...
I'm Mike Anakin. I'm the CEO of McGee Women's Research Institute, and I just want to thank the Hard Rock because this year they raised internationally for us at 153 locations around the globe, and that money came right back here to Pittsburgh. So thank you to the Hard Rock Corporation.
I just want to say thank you. My name's Kevin. I am the General Manager for the Hard Rock Cafe in Pittsburgh. So proud of the team. Thanks to McGee Women's, to Melinda, and also the Seminole Tribe of Florida who owns us. They give great support to the whole community. Thank you.
Just at least introduce yourselves.
My name is Igor Sprekic, and I'm Operational Manager at Hard Rock Cafe Pittsburgh Location. And we are really honored and humbled, you know, like to be here and, you know, like in support for this great cause.
I'm Stephanie Isle. I'm the Financial Assistant at the Hard Rock Cafe in Pittsburgh. Very proud to work for a great organization that supports breast cancer awareness. Being in the financial role there, I help in writing all of the checks to the charities. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lamont Butler, Assistant Kitchen Manager for Hard Rock Cafe. Been there 16 years, love the company, and we appreciate their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone want to come up? And Councilman Coghill knew to wear pink today. And so thank you, Hard Rock, for everything you're doing. And so remember, people, when you're out there thinking where to go, remember to support the people that support our community. And stop by Hard Rock. It'd be a good place to have our Christmas party. And we have one to be read into the record. Madam Clerk? I can't see who's down there. I can't see over this thing.
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, November 4, 2023, to be KSWA Hall of Fame Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
We're moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you. And now let's move us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council approval, and any threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Robert J. Kubik. Is Robert online? Not online? Robert Kubik. Okay, we'll move on to our next registered speaker is Naomi S. Mullen, Naomi Mullen.
Shady Trees, Not Shady Deals, and Bon Air. Purpose to no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Block busting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. Mayor Ganey showed up at our Bon Air Town Hall meeting. He saw clearly that there was strong opposition to apartments in the long-closed Bon Air school. Councilman Coghill was so convinced of the opposition to apartments that the planned virtual meeting was canceled. Had the residents known the virtual meeting would not occur, there would have been even more opponents and attendance at our town hall meeting. Former Mayor Pedudo appointed a board to recommend that the school not be torn down. What gives anyone the right to usurp the will of residents who have quality of life and property value to defend? I repeat, what gives anyone the right to usurp the will of residents who have quality of life and property value to defend? I am glad that CMU is featured today. The City of Pittsburgh turned over employee data to CMU. The purpose was actuarial. How could a premier university that is a leader in information technology have a data breach? That harms city employees. How can we trust CMU? The WHO is the World Health Organization that is funded primarily from commercial income sources. The Gates Foundation invests in immunization and profits greatly from that. The CDC is funded by the Gates and Bloomberg Foundations as well. The FDA is funded greatly by Big Pharma. The Gates Foundation collaborates with the FDA. How can there not be a conflict of interest? Regardless of the Bill Gates involvement with Jeffrey Epstein. Through the WHO, stalk thewho.com, shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller? Good morning.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, PhD, Bell's Hoover, and Washington, DC. I'm a Global Intelligence Society U.S. candidate for President 2024, University of Oxford, University of Pittsburgh, among many other institutions. I secured memberships in the associations of the 21 primary disciplines, which included the Association for the Advancement of Artificial Intelligence and the American Physical Society in the early 2000s. I secured those memberships to direct, to found the Center for Global Studies, international interdisciplinary, which is unique, unprecedented, and in competition with CMU and the University of Pittsburgh. A concern of this council is identifying Pittsburgh as a global city. Now, this morning we heard the word "global" over and over and over again. But what does "global" mean? Does it mean worldwide? It seems that that is what Mr. President of CMU Jehanian seems to mean. But I think that is really plural. What I mean by "global" in my books, Introduction to International Interdisciplinary Globology and Global Intelligence, which is being translated into Haza in Njongo, Espanol, and Deutsch, is the meaning has to do with all. And in all of the 21 primary disciplines, there's a difference in the meaning of "global." It is not necessarily primarily worldwide. Let me give you an example. A council and GIS concern is local resonance of biological genetic information and intelligence, in which the primary meaning of "global" is not worldwide. Global biological genetic information and intelligence uses all of the genetic code of an organism to interpret its formation, deformation, and reformation. Think CRISPR. I approach this as a form of fusion of global and local, because I think that local government, including the government of this city represented by this council, is the most important of the three layers that we have in the United States. I proposed a law in 2009 during public comment to promote biological genetic work, but also to protect us. CMU is developing robots that appear to be human, and I think this council should restrict that.
Our next registered speaker is Melanie Redden. Is she online? Melanie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Melanie Redden. I'm a Bloomfield resident. As a resident and voter, I'm calling on the Pittsburgh City Council to take a stand against Islamophobia by issuing a resolution to protect pro-Palestinian protests as free speech and joining the UN Secretary-General's call for a ceasefire. When humanitarian cries for a ceasefire and to end apartheid are painted as anti-Semitic, as has been done recently to rallies at Pittsburgh colleges, it not only has a chilling effect on speech, it wrongly tells our fellow Jewish residents, we hate or want to hurt them. Anti-Semitism is real, as we know from the tragic attack on the Tree of Life synagogue five years ago. But opposition to the Israeli government is not anti-Semitism. It is a fight between the citizens of the world and oppressive governments, not a fight between Islamic and Jewish people. In fact, MSD International declared Israel an apartheid state in 2022. These should not be radical positions, and supporting diversity means supporting all students. So I'm asking you to do the right thing, the brave thing. the brave thing, and to speak out against terror in all forms, including the terror currently raining down on Palestine, where half of the population are children who just want to go to school and play outside. A Holocaust is being livestreamed, and U.S. citizens are seeing firsthand the devastation our tax dollars are funding. Please protect our right to speak out. Thank you.
Did that exhaust our list of registered speakers? Or is anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Okay, well, I don't have you, but please come forward.
I signed this morning. I'm Devin McLean from the Hill District. CMU, did you guys notice that there was not one student from the Pittsburgh Public Schools that they presented up here? I just thought it was a little odd. You know, you're talking about the region's local economy and stuff, local. The Hard Rock Cafe, I remember one day I went to go apply for a job there, didn't want nothing much more than a prep group or a dishwashing job. I go to look back at the application, the follow-up on it, little bald guy comes out. Yeah, submitted an application. He goes, are you in a program? Listen, I'm kind of like a underemployed Navy reservist here. I can't help you. You need to leave. So that's what the Hard Rock Cafe has done for my community. Not trying to say that, you know, breast cancer a cure is a valid... I'm for that. Shout out to the KSW, to the Keystone State Wrestling, and especially Iceman Tony Smith. Now, the serious stuff. Mr. Schwartzvelder says that you can't determine... Mr. Schwartzvelder with the police union made some very disingenuous statements about whether there's still a police bias here. Right? Also, in the Matrix, it should also be wrong for a police officer to mislead another police officer during the investigation. You can't lie to another cop or suggestively suggest to another cop just to affect an arrest. All right? And I think the next community that the CMU president ought to be rolling through is the Hill District. You know, I don't think, considering all the stuff I've seen in the media lately, that the new police chief or the dude from the union actually read these memoranda coming from the City of Pittsburgh, introduced 1022, 2019, bills number 2019, 2213, 2214, and 2215, respectively. They should be reading those, and all of you people should know what they think about those.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Jesus Christ Harris, the Lord of all the universe. Now, I'm trying to give you people some understanding. You see all these murders happening? That was me. I got murdered five years ago, right after the Tree of Life synagogue. I got a birthright like everybody else. And everybody that swears on the Bible swears to God. And the only way to heaven is through me. So, think about it. I want it to be done. The will of God has to be done. People are being murdered because y'all people don't want to do the right thing. I came back to save you. I could be in heaven, laid back on a cloud, but I'm down in this funky place with these funky people, evil, dirty, rotten to the core. Excuse me. It's just, man, when I just look at all these people dying because you people don't want to swear to the oath that you took to protect. You don't. Not even the president. The president even know me. Everybody, the Pope got to come through me to get to heaven. People is dying because you people don't want to do the right thing. And you think you going to heaven? Oh, Lord have mercy. So I'm telling you, get it together. Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And we have two for... I'm sorry, Reverend. We have two papers here for you.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Sorry, thank you.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 2096, Resolution Providing for the Authorization... Excuse me, my computer just shut off. Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments in Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program, Payment of the Cost Not to Exceed $210,000. And Bill Number 2097, Resolution Providing the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments in Agreements or Agreement with Various Agencies to Provide Job Development and Employment Services, Wages and Fringe Benefits for Supervisor Staff, Workers' Compensation, Unemployment Compensation, Vocational Skills Training, and On-the-Job Training, Outreach, Recruitment Costs, and Administrative Expenditures Necessary to Implement the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $240,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure. He's not here.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for Councilman Kraus.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2098, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center renovation, in the amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill 2099, Resolution Providing for an Amended Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $7,764,987, an increase of $61,070 from the previous authorization. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements, and no costs to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize a project-specific service agreements. Bill 2100, Resolution Providing for a Contribution Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County for Costs Associated with the Armstrong Tunnel Project, Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $1,013,017.62. Bill 2101, Resolution Amending Resolution 276 of 2020 in Order to Authorize an Increase of Payment to the United States Army Corps of Engineers for Certain Remediation Work to Flood Control Devices Along Sawmill Run, in an Amount Not to Exceed $611,468.79, Representing an Increase of $291,468.79, With Such Increase to be Paid Through Issuance of a Warrant. And Bill Number 2102, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers for Costs Associated with the Construction Management and Construction Inspection Phases for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $2,854,186.11, Federally reimbursable at 95%.
Councilwoman Gross, can you make a motion to waive the rules for Bill 2023-2102?
Motion to waive the rules so that Bill 2023-2102 can appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2103, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by $130,500, Reducing Streetscape and Intersection Reconstruction by $20,088.09, and Increasing Ramp and Public Sidewalk by $150,588.09.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. Councilwoman Wilson for Councilwoman Warwick, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2104, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 280 of 2023, Which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into an Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation by Adding Additional Funding to Cover Maintenance Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $2,365. Bill 2105, Resolution Amending Resolution 482 of 2022, Which Authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to Extend a Professional Service Agreement with STR Grants LLC for Software Services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by Term of One Year at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $54,658.65 and Adding Ten Additional User Licenses. Bill 2106, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of U.S. Ignite in the Amount of $30,000 for Annual Dues for U.S. Ignite Communities' Membership Only. Bill 2111, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Open Connector Four Mile Run by $531,314 and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $531,314. And Bill 2112, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Action Housing, Inc. for Services relating to the Installation of Streetlights at the Flats on Forward Mixed Use Development for Sum Not to Exceed $23,400 and for the Payment of the Cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill 2110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Lynn Williams High Rise by $2,500 and St. Ambrose Manor by $1,299.35 and Increasing Pittsburgh Higher Ground Foundation, Inc. by $3,799.35 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy. I have no new bills. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our reports of committee for final action. And we'll begin with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2090, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October 25, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1946, Resolution Amending Resolution 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Park Reconstruction Parks Tax Deliverable Trail Asset Management Plan Parks Tax by $150,000 and Increasing Park Reconstruction Parks Tax Deliverable West End Park Drive Parks Tax by $150,000. Bill 2054, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Shore Terrace Valley District Flood Control Authority in an Amount Not to Exceed $117,204 over One Year, related to Full and Final Settlement of a Case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 2056, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Acquire All Rights Title and Interest to the Property Located on Coin Terrace in the 15th Ward and Identified as Block 54R, Lot 92, in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, and Known as the Coin Terrace Stairs for the Sum of $6,900, plus All Necessary and Incidental Expenses in Connection with Such Acquisition. And Bill 2057, Amendments Amending and Supplementing Section 197.09 of the City Code under Article 11 of Title 1 Administrative by Creating a Process to Recruit New Members, Increasing the Relevancy of Qualification Standards and Improving Other Internal Administrative Affairs of the Ethics Hearing Board.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Safety and Wellness. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2091, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for October 25, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2059,
Bill 2059, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of $1,000,000 to Support the Office of Community Health and Safety's Efforts to Develop and Pilot a Post-Overdose Support Team to Respond to Overdoses with Teams of Certified Peer Recovery Specialists and Case Managers.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? I'm just going to say that I think that this, I think this year will be the year that will prove to us the effectiveness of this office. And I think if we don't see some improvements in downtown and other areas where we're starting to see a spread of some of these issues, including in your district, in the Carrick community. If we don't start seeing some things changing, then that will leave us up to another conversation about whether or not the effectiveness of this is what's working, or whether we need a new plan. So, I'll just say I'm thankful that we're getting this funding. I just wish, and I really think that downtown needs, you know, some help here. But I think that it's not just downtown, it's across the city of Pittsburgh in various areas. And I don't want to forget that other areas are also struggling with some of these addictions and homelessness and some other things, that these things could really be very helpful. And I do think that the Office of Community Health and Safety came to the table last week and did a good job of promoting this. So, with that said, anyone, all in favor of the, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't, the bill haven't received a legally required number of votes, it's finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. And Councilwoman Gross for Councilman Kraus.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. He also has an amendment too, if you see it right there.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2092, Reported a Committee on Public Works, excuse me, my computer keeps cutting off. Public Works and Infrastructure for October 25, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2052, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unused, Unopened Portion of Lacy Way in the 14th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill 2053, Resolution Granting Unto Duquesne University of the Holy Spirit, Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense Seven Bio-Retention Tree Pits and a Retaining Wall at 1305 Forbes Avenue, 1st Ward, 6th Council District. And Bill 2075, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Take Actions Necessary for Recordation of Temporary Construction Easements over Certain City-Owned Parcels in Order to Event a Project for Rehabilitation, Reconstruction, and Repair of the Charles Anderson Memorial Bridge.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Councilmembers have in front of them a amendment to Bill 2075, 2075, thank you. And it looks to me, I just, I'm not familiar with it, it's not my committee, but it looks to me like it's the attached map of the right-of-way plan for the bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so a motion to amend?
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill's amended, and now on the final bills. Are ready for final action? All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Thank you, Councilwoman, for doing that. And moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2093, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October 25, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1979, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations by Amending Section 541.04B, entitled Smart Loading Zones, to Increase the Maximum Parking Duration, and by Revising Section 541.04C, entitled Smart Loading Zone Rates and Penalties to Include a New Four-Tierred Pricing Structure. Bill 2031, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, Effective December 27, 2022, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Grant $100,000 to Specific Public Service Grant Projects of the Mayor's Office, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. And Councilman Wilson for Councilwoman Warwick, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2094, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for October 25, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2058, Resolution Amending Resolution 177 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into an Agreement or Agreement with SciCom Data Systems, Inc., for Professional Services relating to Continuing Maintenance, Support, and Upgrades to City Law, the Department of Law's Current Legal Case Management and Administrative Support Software System, by Increasing Amount by $11,376, for a Total Not to Exceed Amount of $22,752 over two years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes, it's finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2095, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October 25, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2050, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facilities Plan for 6440 Frankstown Avenue at No Cost to the City. And Bill 2051, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works, and the Director of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Permanent Isment with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the Installation, Maintenance, Repair, Operation, and Removal of a Sewer Line on City-owned Property at No Cost to the City.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements, and I want to call for an executive session. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on reviewing the Climate Action Plan. Cheering is Councilmember Erica Strasburger. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November 1st, Council will hold the standing committee's meeting at 10 AM. Speaker registration will close at 9 AM. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage, or call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. That meeting's chaired by Councilman Lavelle. And on Wednesday, November 1st, at 1:30 PM, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda to Discuss the Office of Community Health and Safety, and Councilman Anthony Coghill will be chairing that. Can I have a motion to, for an executive session? I need a motion for an executive session for, what is it called? For procurement regulations.
They'll move.
Just give a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to schedule that probably immediately following this meeting. And let's only remind everyone that trick-or-treating is tonight from 5 to 7. There are children on the streets, please be very, very careful as you're driving around the neighborhoods. Even if you don't see a lot of kids, it might just be one kid, just be careful. And for everyone to check their kids' candy, and to be safe. Anything from members? Nothing from members, going to have a motion to excuse the absent members. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.